I've got seven o'clock. You ready?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. Ms. Huntington, would you call the roll and note that I am here?
Sure thing. Rocky Hempel?
Here.
Jacob Dale?
Here.
Laura Lee Stevens?
Here.
Chris Donnelly?
Here.
Jennifer McCutcheon?
Here.
Thanks. Would you all join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Is there any discussion or question or conversation? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Solid in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three is the consent agenda where we review our bill payments. Are there any questions, concerns, or conversation regarding our bill payments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Thanks, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? During this time, we generally ask for comments from the public if they had signed up by one o'clock today. Mr. Porter, has anyone signed up for open period?
Mayor, we did have one sign up, but they withdrew, so they're not present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Porter. The next item would be old business, and seeing none, we'll move on to item five, new business. Consider request for utilization of city property at the Tongonoxie Library as part of a special event permit application for recurring farmer's market event in 2022. Before I throw this to Mr. Porter, just want to note that my wife and I are involved in this and I don't think there's a need to recuse myself. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. The council hopefully remembers last year's permit and the success that the event that recurred each Thursday for the period of the summer of 2021 enjoyed. We received this special event permit application, and as it involves the use of city-owned property at the public library site, it's forwarded to the council for your consideration of approval. The start date this year and the end date have been moved up and back respectively, just a little bit because of, again, the success and interest level. May 12th would be the start date, and October 13th would be the last Thursday that the event would took place. At the Tongonoxie Public Library, it's located in the outdoor parking lot area. We circulated the special event request to city departments, received no negative feedback about last year's performance or any particular concerns of note. Staff are happy to answer any questions you have, but we do recommend approval of this item based on the submitted materials.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Counsel, do you have any questions? Any conversation on the topic?
One comment. I appreciate Natalie and yourself working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
For the community, and I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Well, it's mostly the misses, but thank you very much. With no, seeing no conversation or questions, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that would approve permit number 005, special event permit application for Tongonoxie Farmer's Market located at the Tongonoxie Public Library. And it'll run through May 12th to October 13th on every Thursday from four o'clock to eight o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel.
It's a special event permit.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. I apologize for interrupting you.
That's all right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I thank you all for the support a great deal. It was a lot of fun last year, and it looks like it's going to grow quite a bit this year. So, thank you. Item B, consideration of funding request to support the Tongonoxie Days 2022 event. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce a couple of people off the bat here. Monica Gee with Tongonoxie Business Association and John Brethauer with the Tongonoxie Recreation Commission. Both are involved in the materials that were submitted for your consideration tonight, and I'm happy they're here to be able to answer any questions you may have at the end of our presentation. Quick overview, last year was a pretty big shift in the format and location and the programming involved in the Tongonoxie Days event. We had a great success. The city contributed funding support that members of Tongonoxie Business Association took and put on an amazing event in downtown. Many people have commented since on how popular the event was and appreciated, and I think there's building interest towards this year's programming and offerings at the same event. I also want to recognize Councilmember Jennifer McCutcheon for her efforts. She's also involved in a planning group that's met, and the proposal you see included in the agenda packet tonight includes a request for funding in the amount of $7,500 to help put on the event again this year. That's the same amount as in last year's request, and it's included in the 2022 general fund budget. I won't go into too much detail about the programming, and I would only point out that the planning group has had preliminary discussions about how to make small improvements. Vendors were a huge hit, and there was strong interest from many vendors to return again this year based on the performance they had in sales and visitorship. We also have a really good feedback about the musical performances, and I think that's an area where we're looking to engage other people in the community and encourage more participation and maybe even add a band, I think, this year as part of the planned programming, in addition to the bands that we had last year. One other thing I would point out, and the reason Mr. Brethauer joined us this evening, the Recreation Commission is pursuing an idea of hosting a fireworks display closely coordinated with this event. Because of the overlap in bands performing downtown at the Fourth Street location and the inability to host a fireworks show in the center of the city like that, they've actually selected to move forward with plans for a Friday night show, which would coincide with the day before the event would be, which is scheduled in October on, or I'm sorry, in September on a Saturday night. So it'd be two consecutive nights, first the fireworks show and then the remainder of the Tongonoxie Days event. Picking a location, though, is an important part of that fireworks display. We haven't had a public display in the city since probably 2011 or 2012. There's two ideas currently being pursued. The primary and the primary goal that's being addressed right now is using Kane Family Farms, which, as you know, is located near the city limits, but not actually within the city's corporate limits. Using that location would allow the county's process in terms of regulation to take effect. So while it is near us and we'd be aware of the planning efforts underway, the county would either have a special use permit for the Kane Family Farms site apply, or they'd have a public display permit through their planning process. We'd be aware of how that's going. But we do want to make you aware, in case the request comes back to the city council, of a backup site if that first site does not work out, which is the Tongonoxie Recreation Ballfields. There's plenty of parking and some wide open spaces up there. The Recreation Commission and the Fair Board are owners of that property and would be in support of it at this point. So our requirements on the city side, should that be the preferred location, are a collection of some more detailed information, and eventually the council would be asked to approve it in advance of the event. So that is not a decision on the table with you tonight, but we wanted you to be aware in case things changed, and that was the plan, and we'd, of course, appreciate any feedback you have about that idea. Unless I missed anything, I think that mostly covers staff's information, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Do any of the organizers care to speak at this time?
I think they both would like to answer any questions, but don't have any comments to share.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Thank you for your continued support of it.
Mr. Brethauer, who's going to make the call of calling the fireworks show in case of weather? Is that going to be the rec's call or the fire?
It could actually be the professional. Well, there's two ways. Is that better? It's something we haven't discussed in full details yet, but it'd be, one, the fire department, either the county fire department or the city fire department, if they issue like a no ban or no burn ban. That would also link with fireworks at that time. Due to weather, like rain, things like that, that would be a situation where the rec board and the professional fireworks company that we're hiring would come together and make that decision. We're using a company out of Kansas City. Been in direct contact with them, and so we'd make that decision together.
Okay.
Kane's Farm has gravel parking to handle up to more than enough to what we need to do. Same thing with fairgrounds. So as far as like parking and stuff like that, that shouldn't be an issue, even if there is some type of moisture rain prior, depending on how much we get. So.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I will make the motion to approve the draft 2022 Tongonoxie Days event budget and authorize distribution of $7,500 to the Tongonoxie Business Association to support the event costs.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your support. I appreciate that. All right. Moving on to item C, Resolution 032201, award of bid and approval of contract with Caldwell Tanks Incorporated for the 2022 Water Tower Project. Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, Mayor. Before I get started, let me make a couple of quick introductions. Brian Kingsley and Alex Chamberlain are here. They're with BG, who serve as the city's engineers on this project and in general. And then Kevin Gallagher is here this evening with Caldwell, who is the recommended vendor for this project submitted by BG. Just wanted to do a quick reminder, so everyone's aware of this project. This is something that's been under design, and recently, as in last week, the EDA announced that they had formally awarded a little over 1.5 million in an EDA grant to assist the city with the financing of this project, which is coming in a little over 3 million. To that end, any action that we take tonight or that you take as a city council is conditioned upon the EDA giving final approval to those documents as well. They have those documents. They're under review. They've asked us a few follow-up questions. We anticipate they'll approve it. Should there be any material changes to the documents you've seen before you tonight, we'll need to bring those back, but at this time, we're not anticipating any changes along those lines. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian or Alex and ask BG to kind of outline the process that we had here, the timeline we're working on. We all know this is a very tight timeframe to get this project awarded and constructed and put in place. And then maybe spend a little bit of time on the selection criteria and qualifications for vendors as well. So with that, Brian, thank you.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor, Council. Like George said, we have been working quite a while to get to this point. We started the process talking to the New Hills facility that was being built and gained an understanding of their water needs, short and long term, as they develop out, as well as taking into consideration the area around the industrial park and what we could get in the future, and the sizing selection for the tank was sized accordingly and gave you some additional capacity there and opportunity for additional expansion development down in the industrial park. In coordinating the timeline, bids were received on March 17th. You received four bids. The project schedule, again, was coordinated with the Hills facility, and just this last week to two weeks, we even had some discussion making sure that the substantial completion date of May 1st of next year and final completion date of the 31st worked with their schedule so that we didn't have to put in exorbitant liquidated damages into the project, and that would drive the city's price up if we were having done that. So I think the city and the Hills representatives worked really well together there to identify the timeline and really finalize that. Like I said, the city received four bids. Engineer's estimate was in the amount of $2,947,402. That's based on historic bid averages and what we've been seeing as an average bid. I can tell you that during the last six months, especially the last three months, we've seen bids coming in anywhere from 15% to 35% over historic averages. You had some pretty competitive bids here. You're not toward the top end of that range, but I think that with everything that's going on, just coming out of COVID, what's going on on the national scene with materials and so forth, that is where we're seeing some of that construction cost index inflation at a really high rate. Bid prices on materials and stuff, I'm sure contractors would tell you, their material suppliers are telling them, you've got a shorter window of time, that we're going to hold this price before you commit, sign a contract, those sorts of things. The low bidder, apparent low bidder during the bidding process was Gerard Tanken Steel. However, when we were reviewing their qualification statement, Gerard's past experience did not meet the minimum requirements that we had outlined in the specifications. I don't know if it would be appropriate to get into details very far past. We had a requirement in the plans. I don't think Gerard Tanken Steel, to my knowledge, at least the information that they submitted, they've not even completed a composite tank, not only of a composite tank, but haven't completed one of this size. So we're recommending that the city consider rejecting the bid from Gerard Tanken Steel due to the lack of experience that they've demonstrated. There was an addendum that specifically pointed out the requirement after some questions back and forth with some of the tank contractors that were going to be submitting bids, so there was a clarification out, and there was an acknowledgement from Gerard Tanken Steel of the qualifications that I just talked about there. So George may have a little bit more to add on to that, but I think I'm going to leave my comments at that level for now. Brings us to a recommendation for award. BG Consultants is recommending that the city consider awarding the contract for construction of the base bid to Caldwell Tanks in the amount of $3,299,000, contingent upon acceptance from EDA or concurrence from EDA and authorized construction. When we add those words, "and authorized construction" into the motion, that allows George to execute notice of award, notice to proceed, and work through the process so we don't have to come back for each one of those steps. We can get the contract signed and work through the process. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I, did you want me to elaborate on anything else? You on that?
No, the only thing I would add, again, just to reiterate, we will still need the EDA approvals, even if you do an approval this evening. For the record, we received two letters. They were too late to introduce into the packet, but we can provide those to you. But I'll, neither one of them necessarily asked to have it entered into the record. We did receive a letter from Gerard disputing that they would be dismissed because of their lack of qualifications. We also received a letter from another party that was not the next lowest bid, which is Caldwell. They're here this evening, but their letter was disputing that Gerard was allowed to bid as an unqualified vendor. So like I said, we'll be happy, Dan and I can forward those letters to you so you can see them, like, and unless I miss something, none, neither of them specifically asked to have them admitted into the record this evening, but I thought I should mention those. That's it. But if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Kingsley?
I have one for both, especially, and I guess it's more of a, you know, what is our obligation to the public when there's 700,000, not quite 700,000 difference in bid, and how do we support that we made the correct decision? I know, Brian, you want to be awfully limited on what you say, and so that may drive over to the attorney to tell us, are we going to get sued or not? But what is our support to our public of why we're going to pay $700,000 more? And I'm not arguing that the decision is not correct or we shouldn't do it.
Without getting into a legal sense, I can tell you that it is a standard in the engineer's world to put qualifications in place to demonstrate a responsible, responsive bidder. We want to see prior experience with similar types of work so that we can confidently recommend that that project is going to be completed. A lot of times, we like to check references. In this case, we couldn't even get to the point of checking references because they haven't built a similar style tank. You know, the different tanks types that are out there, there's multi-leg, that's all steel, welding steel. There's a petosphere like the South Tower. The composite tanks are basically a concrete column with a tank setting on top of it. So when we look for that experience, there are some design responsibilities that are placed onto a tank supplier that are proprietary to that contractor. So without the track record there, there's really no way to check the qualifications or to verify the qualifications. So I can tell you, that's why those qualification statements are put in there, so that we have some confidence recommending award.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Brian. Any other comments?
The only other thing I would add is the EDA staff did review our original bid documents, which had these qualifications listed in there. The addendum, we did two addendums in this bid process. The second one, along with a host of other technical information, provided clarification on that, and to my knowledge, only one vendor or one bid proposal submitted those documents back that weren't signed, but it doesn't include any of the companies we referenced here this evening.
And the other, the higher bidders, they all had the same level of experience in work at Caldwell. Or was Caldwell the only one that's had experience?
We did not check all of the qualifications. What we typically do, and I guess it might be good to point out, too, I think one of the bidders, not Caldwell, did point out that they were protesting or didn't agree with allowing the bid possibly to be read. I'm not sure exactly where they were going with that, but we don't check qualifications when we're reading bids. We check to make sure that they've filled out the bid form, that they've acknowledged the addendums. There's some, there's some high-level checking that we do, but then we go back, verify, when we verify bid tabs, for example, unit prices prevail. So that if they have math errors, we check the math associated with the bid, then we get into the qualifications and go down the line of determining lowest responsible bidder so that we can make a recommendation for award. So going through that process, the day the bids are opened, we don't check all the qualifications, and there's quite a process there to go through.
Sure.
To do that. So that might provide you some explanation as to why they were, quote, technically allowed to bid. We're not going to reject any bids on the day of the bid letting, and that's why we call it an apparent low bidder at that point.
Okay. Anna, do you have any concerns?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsley. Mr. Brackovich, I didn't catch the name of the representative from Caldwell?
Sure. It's Kevin Gallagher.
Mr. Gallagher, we'd like to get to know our community partners. Do you want to step to the podium a little bit and tell us briefly about yourselves?
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Yes, we're very delighted to have the opportunity to have submitted a bid for the project, and certainly, as Mr. Kingsley referenced, you know, the bids were competitive, and we offered as competitive a price as we possibly could and was significantly below, you know, the two other bidders. By the way, yes, the three bidders, not the lowest bidder, but the other three bidders are regular participants in the composite elevated tank marketplace, which, and I'll just show you kind of briefly, the composite elevated tank, and I know I sent a packet of information, but as Mr. Kingsley said, it's basically a reinforced concrete tank, or sorry, a reinforced concrete pedestal with a welded steel tank atop, and that's what actually contains the water. And here are some pictures of different tanks that we've done. And by the way, you know, we've done several tanks in the area in Johnson County. We've recently completed a large 3 million gallon tank for Water One in Shawnee as well. So we're regular participants in the marketplace and regular partners, you know, here with the communities and the water systems throughout Kansas and throughout the country. So just kind of a brief introduction of some of the different styles of tanks, but certainly we look forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
When was the Water One project? Or you've done multiple for Water One?
We have done multiple for Water One. The Shawnee Project, which is a 3 million gallon elevated tank, which is about as big as the elevated water storage tanks get, that was completed within the last two years. And then we're also, they also hired us again to build two new, two more new composite elevated tanks, a 1 million gallon and a 2 million gallon, and also as part of that project to do some repair work on one of their existing tanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dale?
I just got a question for George, so.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
You bet.
Thanks for coming. Thank you.
So is there any process needed to reject a low bid before accepting the recommendations of staff?
I don't believe we need to have a formal process. We hire BG as our city engineer to review that and check the submittal against the qualifications required for the project, and they simply either meet those qualifications or do not. In this case, it would appear that there's no dispute that the low bidder, apparent low bidder, didn't have five composite tanks, which I think is the quantity that we put in the bid documents. They have not built any composite tanks, and this is a project that is on a strict construction timeline, and the fear is having an inexperienced contractor may not be, you know, the best avenue for us on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Any other questions? If, seeing, Mr. Kingsley?
I'm actually, I'm actually going to interject here. I think we may want to consider adding in the rejection of the bid with the contingency of EDA review. And that way, with every, with the letters that have been submitted, with the process that's going to take place, would that be something, maybe, do you have an opinion on that?
If the recommendation is accepted that is contingent on EDA review anyway, I think that would cover both.
All right.
Yeah, and I believe that the engineer's opinion document includes language about why the one bid is disqualified. So I think we might have that covered.
Okay. Thank you all. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that, to approve Resolution 032201 to award the bid of approval of contract with Caldwell Tanks Inc. for the 2022 Water Tower Project.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, is there a second?
I'll second that, but I'd like to add that the price is $3,299,000, if that's okay.
Certainly. Yes.
All right.
And if I may jump in as well, is there also a condition, did I hear that that was part of the motion, that it needs to be a condition, that it's subject to EDA review and approval?
I believe, if you wouldn't mind amending your motion to include that.
Of course. I'll amend to, and that is a condition of EDA approval.
And you take that, you accept that for a second? All right.
Sorry, I'm going to jump in one more time. We'll save you some time listening to this agenda item again if you add unauthorized construction into that motion.
And authorized construction.
Perfect.
Accept that. Mr. Hempel?
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I don't think we had a second. We were just adding on to the one giant long amendment.
I apologize. I thought this was a second.
Yeah, Rocky seconded. Oh, he seconded it by adding on to the motion. All righty.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item B, we had some late information with this, and I'd like to withdraw. I'd like to withdraw this from the, I'm sorry, table this item until a future meeting. Mr. Brackovich, Mr. Porter, do you have any objections to that?
No. In fact, Greg Koz, Senate Communication, he's the Port Authority representative on this. One of the other cities that, the city of Leavenworth was also reviewing the MOU and had some suggested edits. And so they would rather have a completed document so that all the cities have a chance to review the same document. And so we support pulling this item.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're moving on to item E, city manager agenda. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. February is the shortest month of the year. I'll try to keep this to be a brief monthly update on the financials. Included in your agenda, materials at the dais and on the website is our monthly financial report through the end of February, which is about 16% through our fiscal year. Through that point, we've collected 26% of our overall revenue estimates and spent a little less than 12% of our expenditure budget authority across all budgeted funds. None of our funds at this time are also near or at the annual budget limit for the calendar year and fiscal year at this point. This last month, we did have a few financial activities of note that I'd like to point out. We've completed our activities associated with refinancing the 2021A temp notes. Our closing date for 2022B and 2022C fell into early March, and so you'll see updates about that included in that financial report next month. We also want to point out a couple revenue highlights at this point. Through February, we don't have too many expenditures on the books yet for the year, and so you'll see more on the expense side as we progress through the year. But a couple of note, on this first page of the report, I'd like to highlight the fuel excise tax. As gas prices change and as purchasing behavior changes, we do anticipate that there may be a downward trend in fuel excise tax receipts from the state. We did see about a 4% decrease from last year, when gas prices were obviously much different, which isn't a tremendous amount on the grand scheme of things. We did also have strong performance in construction excise tax paid by development on previously undeveloped properties. In fact, that's about 40% more than last year. So as a whole, the street infrastructure fund is about 7.5% ahead of last year's pace. So we're going to keep monitoring that and looking at it accordingly as we budget for next year. We still haven't received our second half of ARPA funds, but we're anticipating receiving another 426,000, which would bring our total funds available this year for use at 765,856. We do have an annual report due in April, and so we'll provide a copy of that with our next financial report, if that's available in time. Moving to page two, you see a highlight of major fund revenues in the major general fund and water sewer, special highway and debt bond and interest funds. Tracking revenue performance, we're either exceeding or right on pace with last year in all funds except the debt bond and interest, and that's just a minor differential from last year, nothing substantial to be concerned about. Our major fund expenditures are on track or just slightly increased in the water operations fund in particular. Moving to page three, page three and four are what I wanted to spend the most time on tonight, and that is detail about our sales and use tax performance. So far this year, we've received two of our 12 monthly remittances, and we do have increased growth on top of growth the last two consecutive years, which is a great trend to see. What the charts represent in the dark shaded column at the far left are for general fund and the infrastructure sales tax fund, which are city sales tax, performance in 2020, year to date through February. In the yellow bar, you can see performance last year through February, and in the orange bar, this year's collections. Our budget for the year is obviously much higher than where we are year to date, but we do see increased growth, as you can see, on an annual basis in each of those areas. So that's exciting to see. We also have seen an increased growth in use tax. So the compensating use tax paid on items either delivered here in Tongonoxi that were ordered elsewhere or that otherwise meet the qualifications for that categorization of sales tax. If you look at page four, that's the city's share of the county sales and use tax. It's also seen growth, but more growth this year than in the last, than in last year compared to 2020. You still have stronger growth as a relative percentage from the prior year in use tax, which I think just supports the trend that isn't isolated to Tongonoxi. It's obviously the trend countywide at least, and collections going up more in that area. So when we think, sit back and think about this, many years of growth trending up means we can be a little more aggressive in some regards with our anticipated collections in future years. But again, this is the most elastic or changeable source of revenue, especially in our general fund that we deal with. So we do want to remember to be cautious as we look ahead and not overproject because those numbers are subject to change both directions, of course. Are there any questions about sales tax or other information anyone?
Counsel? Dan, do you feel like we are, I know we don't budget month to month, but we're ahead of where we would have anticipated should we went back and budgeted month to month?
We are, yeah, definitely. So especially with the use tax performance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is that it? Mr. Porter?
Two more highlights I'll point out. Page five of the report includes a listing of our budget initiatives for this year. Already several checkmarks on that checklist. One more added tonight with community event funding for the Tongonoxi Days event, so we're very excited about that. And hopefully with the utility fund for the water project, the water tower in particular. The very, second to last page of the report identifies the budget timeline. We've just completed our spring retreat and look forward in May to coming back for the capital maintenance and improvements work session scheduled before our budget work sessions really kick off in the summer. Finally, the last page of the report includes a fund balance report and no issues to report there of note. Happy to answer any questions the council have.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Porter. Excellent report.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Brackovich, did you have anything further?
I do not have anything further. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item F, the city attorney agenda.
Mayor, I have no items.
Thank you. Mayor Protem agenda, Mr. Hempel?
No item.
All right. City council agenda, anybody care to share anything at this point?
I would like to thank the Tongonoxi Business Association for putting on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It was great, and the weather was chilly but sunny, and it was a nice event.
And the mayor's agenda, I just want to thank Mr. Hempel for going above and beyond and taking care of counsel in the mayor's position last month. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With that, did you have anything, Vinnie?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, Mr. Dale. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. See you in a couple of weeks.